... by three inch wide strap hinges with butts on them about a little over three feet. By six.
Good evening, I will now call to order the May 19th, 2025 Clark County School Board. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any questions about tonight's agenda? May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any questions about tonight's consent agenda? May I have a motion?
I move that we approve the May 19th, 2025 consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Recognition of Widget Cup Team.
All right, we'd like to ask Mr. Jim Drucker to come forward, please. Mr. Drucker is going to introduce the 2025 Widget Cup Team from Clark County High School. Teams from Clark County, Winchester City, and Frederick County create a widget. This year's beneficiary is the Fremont Street Nursery. Clark County High School won the competition for the fourth year in a row this year. So, we'll turn it over to Mr. Drucker.
Good evening. Only three of the eight members on the team were able to make it for conflicting schedules, but let me bring up Connor Dennison, Brody Murphy, and Emily Vincent. So, the two young men are seniors, we're leasing them this year, and they'll be hard shoes to fill. He's been with us twice, he's been with us three years, your third year as well, but she'll be back, I'm sure. It's been a pleasure, I don't know what the secret is, we're four and out, but we're five for six with this competition. It's changed over the years, it got harder, it got easier, now it's going back getting harder into this, always changes. And the most satisfying thing about this for me this year was, I did not recognize the client at first, but when we went to drop off our product, it's a nursery and I realized my granddaughter had gone there. Not even recognizing by the name, I always knew the storefront, so it was kind of cool that we gave back to the community up there. So, tell them what you did, please, what your job was.
My role was the videographer, so I went around and videoed the whole process, and then we were able to put that into our presentation as like a promotion video for what we made.
I'm just part of the build team, kind of helped around with the welding and the framework for the metal, and then also putting together all the carbon dioxide parts and actually building the product.
So, my job was mostly photography and mainly the presentation portion, so I got to sit down and do a little bit of additional research on the Fremont Street Nursery, and I was able to present it to a panel of judges, as well as all the other schools that were competing, friends, family, the community was invited, so I think we had a really great year.
Can you tell us what the project was? What did you guys have to build?
Go ahead.
So, basically, our project was to create a cart for outdoor toys and different items for the Fremont Street Nursery to use, so we were given a set of parameters, as well as specific materials that we had to use. And then we went in and created a drawing, a design, got it approved, and then we started our build. However, halfway through the competition, they decided to throw a twist at you, so they gave us a twist and they said it had to be identifiable in some way, so we used metal and this like, what was it?
Synthetic wood.
Yeah, synthetic wood, and we put a square on the front of it, made it identifiable, and, you know, we were able to present that to them, and not only were we able to present it at the competition, but then we were also able to actually donate it to the Fremont Street Nursery at the end.
Nice.
Can you do me a favor and tell them what happened on the drop off, when the kids put the stuff in there?
Oh, so, the, I don't know, the lady that runs the place had asked the kids to go around the play area that they have and pick up all the balls that they have and put them in the carts, and funny enough, you can kind of see it in the picture, but our cart had all the balls in it, and none of the other carts were where the kids put it. So, it was just a nice little bonus after winning the whole thing, that they liked ours best.
Thank you, sir.
Nice.
Any questions for us, or?
No, I think this is amazing, you've done a really great job with this, with this, with this kind of competition, I remember when you all first did it, and, you know, we were so excited, like, go win this for us, and here you are, what'd you say, five out of six?
You were five for six.
Yeah, so that's just, that's really amazing, we appreciate all that you do with, for this.
And just so everybody understands, all these students either are in or have been career and technical education courses in our department, so they have to be part of that program in order to participate in this.
That's awesome. Do you volunteer, or are you just selected?
I kind of have a coach's dream, I'm allowed to go around and pluck people, pick them out, if I can't find them in my immediate vicinity, I'll collaborate with other teachers, or even administrators for that matter, and I'll know things about kids that I don't obviously know, like this guy here, I never would have found him two years ago, and Miss Waring told me about him, and I didn't realize he did the videos for VHSO, it was a no-brainer at that point, so.
Don't reveal too much of the strategy.
Doesn't matter. At this point, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, but, no, it's been an honor, I thank you very much, thanks for your support.
And that makes a connection for me, did you do the video editing for the end-of-year video for Cooley Elementary School?
I did indeed.
Well, it could have been a alt project, I was highly impressed, it was very professional.
Glad to hear it, thank you.
And I tried really hard to get him to do the VSBA video, I know, I know, I told him that, and now you're graduating.
Well, going to college for it, so we'll see who that brings me.
You'll be fine, funny feeling you'll be just fine.
Well, congratulations, you guys, job well done representing Clark County.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Drucker, your only problem is going to be we're just going to get to expect this from you.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll see, things happen for a reason. The other team members wanted to say, you know, they wanted to be here, they couldn't, conflict interests with some, you know, things of sports this year, and our other coach, Barbara Fairbanks, couldn't be here, she's doing stuff for FFA tonight for their banquet tomorrow, but she would have said the same thing, she had a really good time as well.
And Mr. Drucker, thank you so much for all that you do for our CTE program, the, I love seeing the, the transformation of the, the shipping container, is that, hopefully I'm using the right words, and the way that your students are turning it into an office, it's just, it's turning into an office, right?
Yes.
It's, it's really cool to watch the progression.
And ironically, five of the team members are on that project as well.
Oh, wow.
So, that kind of worked out.
That's awesome. Thanks, guys, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We will have Jess Foltz and Patrick Hausman to come up and present about the Lego Robotics Challenge.
So, I will lead us off, and then I will hand it off, but myself and Mr. Harry Holloway were able to connect in bringing a grant to Clark that allowed us to get some materials and things for Lego League at the elementary level, and we were able to field two teams, one at Boys, or sorry, two at Boys, two at Cooley, and the grant allowed us to not only get all the materials, things like that, but it also allowed us to give a stipend for the extra time for the coaches, and Ms. Foltz was able to make it as a coach to one of the teams, and Renee, you can go ahead and go to the next one. But the, the theme this year was Submerged Lego League, and I don't know if you want to speak to the theme and then start us through a little bit?
Sure. So, the theme for submerged is really the overarching topic that the students have to both build Legos to kind of coordinate with, and also do a coding project to make whatever they build move and navigate a series of obstacles. So, for our teams, what that meant was learning about the layers of the ocean, learning about different creatures that live in those layers, did a little bit of the topography of what you would find on the bottom of the ocean floor, and then they got to create a submersible, of which was written probably ten times to not actually put it in water, so we learned very quickly that it wasn't actually going to go underwater, but we had to pretend how that would navigate down through the different layers of the ocean, and then navigate the things that we had kind of built on the bottom. So, it combined both their sort of problem-solving and teamwork skills, we had teams of six, which is, we had kind of stacked our teams with as many kids as we could allow and want to participate, which was wonderful, but when you have six minds trying to build one Lego, if you've ever built Legos at home, that sometimes gets a little.
Especially ones without clear direction.
Especially ones where you're making up the, you're making up the directions as you're going. The kids did really well navigating those inevitable kind of differences of opinion that came up. Oliver Lobo is here tonight, again, many of our students also had kind of sports and activity related, and I also want to recognize Sarah Lobo, because she was kind of our assistant coach slash guiding voice, also the Lego picker-upper at the bottom of the team, so we didn't have to step on too many, but Oliver, would you like to step, talk about some of the things?
Sure.
You did great.
So, I guess I'll talk about what happened at the expo. So, at the expo, you go in and you set, we had a big poster board, and it displayed in, displayed all of the stuff we worked on, like our journey and how we designed it, and then when you get there and you place down your mat with your coded vehicle or thing, and then you have like 10, 20 minutes to work on the code, and then judges come around and they ask you questions about like how your code works and what you're learning about, and then at, at the end, everyone goes up and everyone gets an award, so there was like a coding award and a design award, me and my friends, me and my friend got a one of the many coding awards, and it was a lot of fun.
And you can see by the slide that there was a decent amount of work that went into things, it started all the way back in January with the first coaches meeting, and then all the way through April, there was after-school meetings, the expo was a full half-day on a Saturday, and we had a good turnout for a Saturday with nice weather, so it was, it was tough to get kids in, but they had tons of games and stuff outside of that. I found out the day when I showed up that I was also going to be a judge, so I got to learn what that meant and walk around and actually interview some of the teams, which unfortunately meant I wasn't able to be in the room with the Clark kids, but as I went around and then I came back, Oliver's team was actually still being interviewed by the judges, and I, I was sitting, I was listening to that comparing to what I heard, and I thought, wow, our, our group was really out and above some of the other groups, and I probably shouldn't say that as a judge, but I came in afterwards, I was not evaluating our group, but I was like, wow, I got, I'm impressed. And Renee, if you go ahead and advance a little bit, there's a couple pictures from some of the crew that was there, they set up a little photo board in the back, so, and they had, as you can see, they had some props, so kids were enjoying that, you can see one of our teams from Boys on the left side, trying to use all those minds, trying to get them to come together on that same project, and you can go ahead to the next one, and you can see the teams here, all of the members, we only ever get a few here, super nice weather, lots of sports things going on, but Boys had the Orca's that won the Challenge Solution Award, as well as Team Compression.
No, we're, the, the, the people and the teams are.
Swapped, okay, we'll fix that. Appreciate it, but you can see they, they won those two different awards, and you could definitely tell as the students explained things, the ones that really knew the coding side and really mastered that side. And then, a few pictures from some of our Cooley crew, and you can see a picture of the judges on the bottom side, so we actually went around, we had clipboards, it was very official, and the students were very well spoken, across the board, everybody was very impressed. And then Ms. Justiceon wasn't able to be here from Cooley, but you can see they had the minifigs that won the creativity award, as well as the asteroid destroyers that won the team model award. Anything else to share?
I'll just end with, this is the first time that we've done anything like this at Boys, or probably at least at the elementary level. We also had a concurrent Lego club running at the same time that was for younger students, and all, like, the library had Legos everywhere, frankly, and every kid was asking, what are they, what are they doing, what are they doing next? So, it kind of became almost like the, you know, like this spring training, spring season for Lego League. It's something we would love to continue, because there was a huge amount of both student interest, parents were super supportive of it, and it really allowed students to shine in ways that they may not necessarily get to in a standard school day. So, we had a varied variety of students on the team, and they all got to use skills that are a bit maybe under-recognized, so if you were someone who had really great spatial engineering, like, I had one student who can look down and go, that won't go through there, I'm like, you need to come to my house right before I'm going on vacation and see what my back of my car looks like, but those sorts of skills go very under-recognized, and it was really wonderful to be able to have students, Oliver and others included, that were able to have that sort of moment where they had that autonomy of what they were learning and how to describe it to everyone, so, thank you.
That sounds amazing, thank you for leading that. And Oliver, what grade are you in?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade, you're a really good speaker, buddy, to be talking in front of everybody like this, well done, thank you for explaining that, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Right, next we'll have Mr. Frank Moore to come forward, and he's going to recognize employees that were found in recognition for support of our students with disabilities.
And I'm actually going to turn it over to our SEAC Chair, Jayoni Wood, and if the rest of the SEAC group, y'all taking pictures, if you're not taking pictures in your own SEAC, come up and stand behind us so we can recognize y'all as well. So, the Special Ed Advisory Committee sought nominations for teachers and other school staff who fostered an inclusive educational environment that supports students of all abilities. So, the folks who are being recognized tonight were nominated by either another teacher, a parent, or another school staff for demonstrating good inclusive practices in their classroom. So, they'll be receiving a certificate and a letter from SEAC that has the specifics about their nomination as well, so.
All right. I just wanted to say, as a parent of three kiddos who have had varying levels of special education, we appreciate you so much as parents, the teachers that put so much into creating an inclusive environment. I found a really cool quote that I thought applied really well to this situation, Walt, sorry, William Arthur Ward said, "Teaching is more than imparting knowledge, it is inspiring change. Learning is more than absorbing facts, it is acquiring understanding." And I think when teachers go out of their way to create an inclusive environment, you're also creating an environment of understanding for the kids in your classroom who don't have special needs, but who are creating friendships and welcoming those students who do, so thank you all very much. We're going to call up Angie Lavely. And probably save applause for the end. Okay, we'll, we'll clap for everybody at the end.
Thank you.
Michelle Cox. Eric Morgan. Thank you. Thank you. All right, everybody smile.
Actually, actually, before you all, before you all go, were you going to say anything else, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, no, okay, I, I know there's a lot of you, I would love to know where each of you work and, and what you do for the system, if you don't mind if we could just kind of go through it quickly?
Start with.
Mr. White, who are you?
Paula Reed, I'm at Johnson Williams in the MD Room.
Jennifer Mooney, I'm at Johnson Williams, and I'm a special education team lead and I'm a special education.
Jaclyn Kraus, I'm also at Johnson Williams, I teach eighth grade English.
Mandy Ballas, at DG Cooley, third grade reading and social studies.
John Glimp, I am a special education teacher at Clark County High School.
Angie Lavely, DG Cooley, third grade math and science.
Sherilyn Shiley, occupational therapist, and at most every building.
Pam Murphy, from Clark County Preschool.
Christina Callings, I'm at Boys, I'm a special education teacher for fourth grade, second grade.
I'm Gina Basham, I'm at Clark County High School, and I work in the special ed department.
Samantha Pigott, Clark County High School, special ed multiple disabilities.
Jennifer Hornbaker, Clark County Preschool.
Rachel Thompson, special education teacher at DG Cooley.
Wendy Odom, instructional assistant kindergarten.
You know, this isn't, thank you, everybody, I know this is, this isn't, well, everything I feel like we all do for the school system is a thankless job, but this is incredibly important, I know my daughter had to go through services as well, and we couldn't have, we couldn't have done it without people like you, and I just feel like this school division just has such a solid group of people that support our kids who need these extra services, so I'm sure you go home sometimes extremely tired, but you wake up the next day and show up for us again, so just know how much we really, really appreciate you, and I hope you can see what a sweet sort of recognition this is to show how much we do appreciate you, so thank you. We can clap again. Oh my, Randy, I just saw another gentleman who looked like you. I thought you were leaving and I was about to go and get you. You are not going. Okay, retirees. I know, I'm stalking this man. He's going to be, he's going to be celebrated tonight.
At this time, we'd like to recognize employees who are retiring at the end of this school year and thank them for their years of service to Clark County Public Schools and its students. We'll start with James Jimmy Ashby. And Jimmy began his employment with Clark County Public Schools as a crossing guard and a custodian in October 2004 until November 2011. After a break in service, he expressed a desire to work with students and returned in 2012 as an instructional assistant at Johnson Williams Middle School before transferring to Boyce Elementary. Jimmy is a Clark County High School graduate and attended Shepherd University. He also played on the Winchester Royals baseball team and has been a little league coach with Clark County Parks and Recreation Department. So we do have a, a gift for everybody, so we'll make sure to get that to Mr. Ashby. And if you're here, when we call your name, if you'd come forward. All right, the next retiree is Lisa Nick. Ms. Nick holds a bachelor's degree in international business from Catawba College in North Carolina. She has a master's in education with English as a second language from Eastern Minnetonka University and later obtained her reading specialist endorsement for EMU. She's endorsed as an ESL pre-K-12 teacher and a reading specialist. She began her career in education as an instructional assistant in Frederick County, then as an ESL teacher. In 2014, she moved to Waynesboro and was an ESL teacher and reading specialist. She came back to our area and became an ESL teacher in 2016 in Winchester City Public Schools. In 2017, she came to Clark County Public Schools and for the last eight years, she's been at DG Cooley. Ms. Nick has been an important part of our ESL program and she stated that family engagement activities, picnics, and field trips were highlights of her job and she values these pieces. She was also headed to the Teachers as Readers Program at Cooley and Boyce. Ms. Nick is dedicated to our students and their families and we're going to certainly miss her. And I do know that she is a tremendous asset to our division and really thankful, I mean, she always has, but she's had some tremendous results this year, so will be deeply missed.
Thank you.
Our next retiree is Ms. Donna Michael. And Ms. Michael holds a degree from Merrimack University as an RN and a BS in nursing from Old Dominion University. She obtained a reading specialist endorsement from the University of Virginia. She holds a license in administration and supervision, pre-K-12, health and medical sciences, middle education, six-eight English, and a reading specialist. Donna was a nurse at INREP before coming to Clark County. She's held many positions in Clark County Public Schools from an instructional assistant, a keyboarding teacher, a nurse apprentice, elementary and middle school English teacher, and a reading specialist. During the 2007, '08 school year, she was the reading teacher of the year for the Apple Valley Region and in 2009, the reading teacher of the year for the Virginia State Reading Association. So we'd like to thank her for her time and service. All right, our next retiree is Ms. Rochelle Shelley Miller. Ms. Miller received her Bachelor of Science in Nursing from Boston University. In 2014, she was nursing in Connecticut. In 2015, she became a substitute nurse for Clark County Public Schools and assumed the nursing position at Clark County High School in 2017. One of the many contributions to Clark County Public Schools that she made was making sure that students had the required vaccines that they needed. So we're really thankful for Ms. Miller's time with us. The next retiree is Ms. Brenda Bennett. So if she would come forward.
Or you cannot retire, so you can decide what you'd like to do.
And Brenda's just been a wonderful asset to our division and she is a tremendous person. Brenda accepted the role of Finance Director around February of 2020 after working for several years in the Joint Administrative Services Finance Office. Within weeks of her acceptance, the office closed and pivoted to working from home. As part of accepting the role, she was to shadow her predecessor to get up to speed, but instead this period was a total shift to working from home and additional COVID money coming in. She began her role with managing $2.5 million in CARES funding that required intensive tracking along with additional millions received in ARPA money and the ESSER money. She managed all this in a new work environment post-COVID that required her to blaze her own path with lots of uncertainties. In 2013, while fulfilling her role as an accountant, the Sheriff's Office recognized her for extraordinary administration of the Gang Task Force Grant for several years. Brenda has worked with three superintendents in an interim managing the school budget while also managing the county government. Her dedication to this county is tremendous and she will be greatly missed. And I would second that. She's been so wonderful through the budget process and everything financially. So we're going to miss her, but we wish her the very best in retirement.
Are you sure? Are you sure? It has been wonderful working with you. It really has been. I felt like we've learned a lot together too. And I think I can speak for me and Katie since we do finance committee with you. Not only are you just our finance person, but you've also become a friend. And anyway, we wish you just lots of happiness and great adventures. And you know, if you want to sub back here, you can always come back.
We have one more retiree, which will also be a tremendous impact on our division. Mr. Randy Trinari, if you would come forward.
Short version.
Okay. And if you know Randy, he doesn't like attention to himself, but he's got an incredible positive disposition and work ethic and always does anything with a smile and is always looking out for the best interest of our staff and students. Randy received his bachelor's degree in physical education from Shepherd University. He became a PE teacher at Clark County High School in 1994 and in 1999, he was a dean of students. During his time in Clark County, he was also a football coach, JV basketball coach, boys-girls track coach, and a strength training coach. He transitioned to Loudoun County in 2001 as a PE teacher, then became an assistant athletic director. He returned to Clark County in 2011 as the Director of Operations. During his time as the Director of Operations, he oversaw transportation, custodians, facilities, summer workers, workman's comp, capital projects, and for a brief time, food service. He is instrumental in the weather-related decision-making and we sure will miss him at 4:00 AM, you know, checking the roads for us and late nights plowing. Randy has also lent his time to the Eagles Athletic Association and was instrumental in the Berryville Bluegrass Series, which raised funds for the EAA. But made a, makes a tremendous impact every day and we certainly wish he wasn't retiring, but we wish him the best.
Thank you.
You know one thing about you, sir? Is when people talk about you, Randy, one thing everybody says in their own little way is just what a solid, good human you are. So like, yeah, sure, we're losing the Director of Operations, but like, not that we're losing Randy Trinari, but like, we're losing Randy. So I just want you to know, like, we appreciate you for everything you've done for the school system. I know people appreciate you for everything you've done for this county. But I think also people just probably feel really lucky to even know you. So thanks for everything you have done for us, honestly.
Thank you.
We will miss you. So Mr. Trinari, I want to just share one little anecdote. Probably from, I guess, maybe the beginning of your career in Clark County, but you were my track coach at Johnson Williams. And I remember you, and you were like coaching us in long distance. I'm not sure how much you knew about long distance running. But we'd have like the same workout and I remember, you know, like you run in a line or something and you have to sprint and run to the front. But anyway, my friends and I were all convinced that, that we got you out of the military because your hair was really short. And you just, you've, you've touched our, you know, my life in so many ways. And I remember your daughters when I was teaching, I taught them swimming lessons. So it's just, it's wonderful to see you be able to retire and I hope that it's years of lots of good health and, and good times with your family. Thank you. Okay, your tour's over. Thank you and congratulations to everybody and we obviously do wish you the best, so thanks. Next, Ann Marie.
At this time, we feel it is appropriate to recognize the former employees who have passed during the '24, '25 school year. One thing for certain with an educator is I think that they are able to, you know, touch eternity a little bit by having their legacy live on and those that they taught or worked with or made a connection with. But we have a video presentation.
I love that you did that. Thank you.
Well, and I wanted to recognize who did it. Ms. Renee did that and she does tremendous work and we're really lucky to have the employees that we do.
Yeah, that's very nice. Finance committee. Bye. Have a good night.
See y'all.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we need to?
It's on my computer.
I don't know that I need, no, okay. There we go.
It's back then now.
Yep. Okay, the, on, the finance committee met on May 14th and reviewed a few items. And the first item that the committee reviewed is an FY25 supplemental appropriation request for $37,122. This is for federal funding received from the Virginia Department of Education for a school improvement grant to support Johnson Williams Middle School. The grant will provide about $22,000 for personnel and approximately $15,000 for purchase services and materials and supplies. It will cover costs for additional planning time and additional support, additional planning time for those teachers and additional support for students during the summer months. It was part of a grant that was received to help improve the students for Johnson Williams Middle School since it's a federally identified school. No local funds are required and the finance committee does recommend approval of this request. That board action comes a little bit later, takes place under the new business on the agenda. Any questions about this grant? Item number two is a review of the updated FY25 operating revenue projection. Local funding is projected to be about $63,000 more than budgeted at this time. Most of that increase is due to additional dual enrollment tuition and rental and facility fees. There is, let me see, I know that was on the local. And so that's kind of where we're at for the local funding. That $63,000 will be in addition to what's actually budgeted. So that actually is on a positive note. State funding has changed slightly since it was reviewed last time, I believe at the end of February. State funding has an additional $75,000 for the ACSE grant, which is Advancing Computer Science Education Grant. And that's new since the last time we've looked at state funding. Overall, the state funding is expected to be about $155,000 less than the current budget. And the new, the last section is the federal funding and no new federal funds are expected. So that leaves a total overall revenue estimate of about $92,000 less than the current actual budget. So we are watching that close and we're still continuing to track those numbers. We'll probably be looking at that state funding a little harder over the next 30 days or so to see how sales tax is tracking because normally that's kind of, that can swing one way or another. So. Any questions about that? Item number three on the report is regarding salary scales. The committee members were just informed that administration is working on updating salary scales and will share that information at a later date when all those are more finalized. So just wanted to kind of put that out there. Also, just, well, let me go. Lastly, the committee discussed the FY25 year-to-date operating expenses. This expense report was approved in the consent agenda, but we wanted to look at those expenses to see where we are tracking for the year. And at this point, we're seeing about 94% or $20,494,000 of operating budget has been expended. That also includes encumbrances as well as expenditures compared to where we were last year at about 95%. So we're tracking pretty well for this year. After adjusting for the revenue shortfall that I just spoke about and remaining FY25 expenses that we're expecting, the, the operating budget could fall somewhere around 100, 200,000 in expenditure budget available at the end of the year. But once again, there are still several unknowns. So we're going to be looking at that again next month and then at the, as the end of the year approaches, we hope to narrow that down so we can figure out exactly where we are at the end of the year with expenditure budget. But we look to be in pretty good shape, so no real big surprises or anything. Then lastly, the bonus, we had talked about that, I believe, last month. And it's looking like the funds from the state, from the Virginia Department of Education should come to us and be received on May 30th. So we are hoping our goal is to receive that on May 30th and then process the pay, the bonus pay to those eligible employees on June 6th. So that gives us a few days to, to get that done. That's our goal.
Yeah, and once again, you know, that's all based on actual receipt of funding, but now that we have a date, it's went to this point, I think that that's pretty solid, but we can't guarantee anything. went to this point, I think that that's pretty solid, but we can't guarantee anything. But they released the projected payment to the division to be May the 30th. And if y'all remember, we said if we had it by May 23rd that we would do it on May 30th. But they're giving a little leeway on that June 1st deadline, so there's, it's not going to be feasible for May 30th, but we're, it was June 6th, wasn't it, that we're aiming for?
We're hoping for that. We're working a little bit ahead to get everything ready, so that when we do get the funding, we can go ahead and process that payment, or those payments.
Any questions for Ms. Bennett? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Superintendent's update?
What we'll do with this is continue recognition and appreciation. May is another big month of a lot of appreciation pieces, and I think it kind of reminds me, and there's a video out there, of how every different employee can make an impact in a kid's life if they're positive, and how they interact with kids, and it takes all of us working together. But during May, we did have a Teacher Appreciation Week, where we sec, where we celebrate all the amazing teachers in our schools, and we thank them for the countless hours that they spend planning, mentoring, and supporting our students. Their dedication, hard work, and commitment doesn't go unnoticed. Also, we had May 1st being Principal Appreciation Day, and we know that effective and devoted principals are crucial to school success. The job of a principal is complex, as he or she has to support staff, students, families, and local stakeholders. While we can celebrate principals daily, the day in May is set aside to recognize their commitment. Also, May 2nd was Food Service Employee Appreciation Day. These compassionate school family members make sure that our students get the nourishment and support that they need each day. We have all witnessed the care and attention that our food service staff give to our kids. During the Future Chef Challenge, it was clear that our staff loved working with our kids. Also, finally, May 6th was International Nurses' Day. Our school nurses make an incredible impact each and every day. Their kindness and empathy make a profound difference in the lives of our students and our staff. Our nurses have an unwavering commitment to providing exceptional care. Also, we were delighted that Mr. Clark, the band teacher at Johnson-Williams Middle School, submitted an application to the National Association of Music Merchants, and Clark was recognized as one of the best communities for music in the country. Also, DECA International Career Development Conference results are attached here for your information. I just really feel like we've got a lot of good things happening, and I'm appreciative of that, and kind of pushing boundaries. We're going down a new road tomorrow, but Dr. Seale and Shane Coleman, our Work-Based Learning Coordinator, myself, will be doing a podcast, which we've never done before, with the Virginia School Boards Association tomorrow. So, we'll see how that goes for recognition of our programming. But, thank you.
Thank you. Audience comments? Anybody wishing to speak? No? Okay. New business, consideration of supplemental appropriation for school improvement grant. As Ms. Bennett mentioned, we have a $37,000-plus grant for Johnson-Williams. Any questions about the appropriation? May I have a motion, please?
I move that the FY-25 School Operating Fund budgeted expenditure and appropriation be increased by $37,122, and that revenue budget and appropriation be increased by the same amount, all for the purpose of receiving federal grant funds from the Virginia Department of Education for a school improvement grant to support Johnson-Williams Middle School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? School Board member comments? Mr. Brumbek.
All have it.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing, thank you.
Just, real quick, like, this was a great meeting, and it was, it's nice to, to be able to celebrate the successes of our students, but also our teachers and staff. So, thank you.
Tito. Principals, everybody, thank you for being here on a Monday night. We appreciate you. We have a motion for a closed session, please.
I mean, move to convene a closed session to discuss personnel matters, including appointments, resignations, and retirement pursuant to Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1, and legal advice on a specific legal matter pursuant to Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A8. The estimated time required for the closed session is 60 minutes, and action is expected.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I move to reconvene our open session.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
All opposed. Certification.
Pursuant to code section two point two dash three seven one two B, Jenny, have you served out Mr. Brumback?
Aye.
Just close it.
Aye.
Mr. Brumback.
Aye.
We have a motion for a closed session.
Um.
Oh, this is wrong. Um, yeah, just, um.
Action.
Actions. Personal agendas.
So I move to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
I suck it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thanks everybody. All adjourned.